I call to order the town of Crewe regular council meeting for January twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Will you all give rise for the invocation and the prayer of the Lord?
For heaven, I will be there, that kingdom will be done on earth as it is in heaven. If this day is made of death, we will sign trustless, and we will be able to trust this against us. And we will sign interpretation with the resolution of evil, the God's kingdom, power and glory forever. I pray and declare the United States of America and the Republic of which is a sentence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We welcome you tonight to the first of the two thousand and fifteen Crewe council meetings. This, for the council myself, we have one quarter of our phone number. Even though we are starting a new year, it is not a physical year by the, by the, um, the town. Our vice mayor is a little under the weather. Our town attorney will be coming shortly. So I welcome you and I thank you all for being here. Um, to start off this evening, I'd like to turn it over to our police chief, Chief Booth, for introduction of our new officer.
Yes ma'am, Officer Kinslow, buried in the back. He's joined Crewe Police Department on November first, two thousand and fourteen. He comes into the department with four years of law enforcement experience. Is that right? Couldn't remember if it was four or five. Uh, where he's previously worked in the town of Quantico and Crewe, Oregon. And he's been with us for two months now, and so far he's done an outstanding job.
Well, we appreciate you being here and we're glad to have you on the force. And Kinslow is an old, old name, a recognized name here in Crewe. So I don't know where is, you know, you might be related, but we are so happy to have you. We were going to have a presentation at this time, but the person who won the award is out sick today. So we will do that at another time.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, delegation from the public citizens' comments before we start a meeting. Is there anyone who has a citizen comment that they would like to make at this time? Okay, Mr. Grasser?
First of all, I'd like to thank the town workers for all the help that they gave us dismantling the park. It was a great help. And second of all, I would like to express my feelings to the police department for an incident that happened Saturday at the park, which I was putting away things in the shed, and unbeknownst to me, the gate, the door was left open on the shed. But I was down in the lower field with my grandson collecting everything with the truck. We came back, we closed the shed up, and I was heading out, and here comes the state police and one of the, uh, police carts from town, and they said, "What are you doing here?" And I said, "Well, I'm Chamber President, you know, and I'm putting the stuff in the shed." And I said, "Unfortunately, you know, I left it open while I was going back and forth." He said, "Well, we got somebody that was driving by that saw it opened and they reported it." And I said, "Well, thank you." I said, "At least I know that the police are on the watch, looking out for us." But I thought I was going to jail.
And didn't he know what you're doing?
Thank you, chief.
We wouldn't be able to do that, Bill.
On behalf of the town, and I, I want to thank the Chamber and the Recreation Association for the fine slate that you all put on.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments from the citizens? Okay, we can move right on one. The next is the consent calendar. Matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of the council and may be voted on separate. In the consent calendar, we have the minutes of the regular town council meeting held December eighth, two thousand and fourteen. And the bill sheet, which had, I believe you might have received two bill sheets. The one, the correct one that may have been in your package was for one hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-nine cents total. Are there any questions, additions?
Just a quick comment. Um, just looking through some of these, we're halfway through the fiscal year, uh, and some of these budgets are getting a little high, a hundred thirty-one percent, two hundred ninety-two percent. Um, so we may want to just keep an eye on some of those and adjust as according, uh, adjust accordingly for, for next fiscal year if it turns out that we do need to adjust some of those line items to be consistent.
Yeah, I, I looked at the total, the bottom line, and it seemed like we were in, both of them were in the fifty percent range.
Right, right.
Or, you know, so that's, sometimes the revenue that would offset the expenditures don't show up on that act. Do we have a motion?
May I make a motion that the consent calendar is presented second?
Okay, it has been moved as seconded to, um, accept the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor, send the "aye" in your opposed flag sign. The motion is carried. Okay. I'll give a vote. I think I'm, thank you all, thank you. I was literally in a trial until thirty minutes ago, so I certainly apologize for being long.
Hope you won.
Oh, the worst part about it was, is that it's held over until tomorrow afternoon at two. So I've got to go back, but that's permanent, so I'm good. But thank you all for the invitation. We'll move on to the town manager's report, and I think after this, during the manager's report, there are some information sheets that are in your packet that we need to deal with as a business report, and there will be, I think, three items at least that we need to do a roll call vote on. So we'll turn it over to you.
All of these deal with the Lipscomb Stratton project. Um, there are some formalities, if you will, that need to take place. I hope you had a chance to review the information once you had it in the packet. Um, it's about, I guess it's bold, totally. One, you don't go about it yet, but it's just a contract with the engineers. So, um, the first item is the housing rehabilitation board roster. This was a, if a board has the authority to make critical decisions for the housing rehabilitation component of the project. Uh, our county planner, which is Kelly Lewis, would not away recommend it to follow individuals to fill a seat for the roster. To comply with the requirements of the project management plan, council must appoint this board. So what we need is a motion to appoint this board.
Quick question for the building official. Is there any other option?
No.
Okay.
For those of you in the audience, the, um, who may not know, the names on this board are Wade Walker, county manager, Kelly Lewis, which is the county, the county of Notaway planner, Earlene Powell, which is Southside Outreach Group, and Al Ellington, which is Notaway County Building Official.
And why not Wade? Well, he's the county building inspector, unless we wanted to appoint somebody to pay him.
How long does this project sit last?
It's long term, it's two phases. First, there's a couple of years, and then there's a second phase, two.
There is a group, there is a group that oversees the actual building and inspections along, which is Earl Powerton. And, uh, this individual is the one that went with the group to go around and examine the homes before, you know, they were accepted into the program. And so he really will be looking mainly at the construction and the results and all that in the project.
And if something were to change in the future, we can always go back and, it selects someone else to do that position.
If, if we bring it up and vote on approval?
Okay, perfect.
May I have a motion for this?
So move.
Okay, may I have a second? Okay, it has been moved as seconded, so I need to do a roll call vote on the names Wade Walker, Kelly Lewis, Earlene Powell, and Al Ellington. I'll start with Shirley Dalton, Steve Sis, E.B. Fisher, Anne is absent, Robbie Knight, Al Simpson, Phil Miskelik.
Aye.
Miskelik.
Mr. Smith.
Phil. This, uh, this, this is, just so you know, this is a housing rehab board. There's a whole lot to be involved in this. We have a management team that meets, and it's probably double this number. So there's a lot more input involved, but this is just a requirement that's, that's necessary. Um, second part is the appropriation of funds. Uh, council needs to pass a resolution accepting the grant award for the Lipscomb Stratton project. And I think you've got an attachment, uh, I'll read it for the public. The Department of Housing and Community Development, D H C D, awarded the town of Crewe seven hundred thousand dollars for multi-year one of the Lipscomb Stratton Street Revitalization Project. These funds have been set aside in a separate bank account from First Citizens Bank, titled Lipscomb Stratton Revitalization Project. All funds in this project will be used specifically for the Lipscomb Stratton Street Revitalization Project. Obviously, as this says, we will not use this money for anything other than that. That's, yes, we have to.
May I have a motion on this resolution?
So move.
Second?
Okay. Robbie Knight and, um, uh, Phil Miskelik. All right, I need, all those in favor, I need to do a roll call. Ms. Dalton? Mr. Sis, Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Knight?
Aye.
Mr. Simpson?
Aye.
Mr. Miskelik, Miskelik. No sense in breaking up on...
Just on the bill.
The third, uh, third item on this list is the adoption of the Virginia Procurement Act. I have as much trouble saying procurement if you do.
Yes, we all use that as often.
We'll call it the Act.
Yeah.
As required in pre-contract review, council must have a written set of procedures that would detail how procurement will be made and by whom. Tessie and I had some discussion about this, and she had a little bit of concern about adopting this act. So, because the question would be, are we obligated to this act from now on?
Mm-hmm.
In the past, being the population of the town of Crewe has, we are not required to do procurement. We usually do. Um, basically what that means, you know, is that if we get bids for projects, naturally, in most cases, we're going to do that. But a lot of times, in, in, being a small town that we are, we've got somebody that comes in and does some work for us at a reasonable price, and we feel like it's reasonable that we ought to do it. Sometimes it's hard to get full bids for a project. So the only thing I will say in adopting this, and Tessie, I don't know, you and I didn't really discuss this, is this last part that talks about adopting small purchase procedure, which basically said that anything sixty thousand dollars or less, we're not required to follow this. You know, most of our projects are less than that. If they're more than that, then, uh, I'll say a hundred percent of the time, we're going to go through a procurement process anyway. So I, I think we're comfortable in doing this. Uh, I mean, we have had some discussion about it and have looked into it, but, um, we need, we have to, we have to adopt it in order to get this project done. Let me touch, yeah, a comment.
I'm certainly not wanting to gum things up if, you know, that's what, the way you all want to go. And certainly Wade, you know, I trust you, you know, the town's procurement procedures better than I do, because you do them every day. So if you feel comfortable with it, then by all means, I'm for it. You know, it certainly does add a level of red tape that the town was enjoying not, you know, going by. And then two, I guess what we could always do too is, once we're done with this project, as long as it isn't a requirement that we would have to keep it on, which I haven't seen anything that would be if the town, towns would desire to, you know, repeal it at that time, we certainly could. But, you know, at the same time, it's certainly a good, you know, thing to have in place that just adds another level of simplicity to the issue. So, yeah, but I completely defer to you being decisive, and if you think it's in the town's best interest for us to go for it, then please take that.
So it's up to me. I mean, but the bottom line is, if we can't do the project, then I, I think, based on what she just said, we choose at some point down the road to, to play with it, I guess we can.
I think it's a good policy to have, we should be getting comfortable bids for anything over sixty thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, we, we.
And don't take that as, that same, that statement, so I don't think you're going to see anything different. Plus Black and Berkle have already gone through this, and I haven't heard them saying...
Well, because of population, they're, they're under the Act. Berkle's not, not, and I guess they adopted it in order to do their project. So I, I don't think it's going to be a problem, or everybody knows what we're doing. And that particular copy of that Act, is that from the town office?
Yeah, right, right here, that's what it is, it will be.
A lot of mumbo jumbo, basically, and says you're going to have to get bids.
I guess my question would, my only question would be is, since we're adopting the procurement act, would that need to come in the form of an ordinance with a public hearing and things like that?
They didn't seem to indicate that it did, they just said we needed to adopt it. Uh, Davey, the county planner, so, and also the H C D. I don't know, it's your, I mean, it would delay us, well, if we had to do that, we can.
If you don't mind, I'll look into it to be sure, because I certainly don't want, you know, any complaints to come about. But if that satisfies, you know, D H C D that we did it this way, then certainly that would be fine. But if we were going to implement in the future, probably would be advisable that we have, you know, an ordinance that adopts it and would have the public hearing and do everything like that. Yeah.
Let you call.
Yeah, if you could, please, I'd be good.
Sorry, table this one for?
Yeah, sounds like it.
See, I still did gum it up.
No, I'm just, you're supposed to gum it up. I see what you need to do.
Okay, yes, I think that we probably would need to have an ordinance that would adopt it. And then if for some reason I find out different, then we'll deal with that.
Um, the last thing would be to approve the, the contract between B and B Consultants and, and the town. Again, a formality, the contract's been reviewed, it's a standard contract that they use for this type of project. So, well, we're dealing with grant funds here, so I don't know whether we want to hold on to that until we get this all straight before we sign the agreement.
I wouldn't see why you would need to, Frank Legel seems one at least.
We just need to prove my signature for this, that council needs to know.
Okay, um, B and B Construction Consultants Incorporated for the Lipscomb and Stratton Streets Neighborhood Improvement Project. We need to give approval for the town manager to, um, sign the papers for the professional services for the design construction phase of the above referenced project. And, um, could I have a motion for that?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, have a second?
I'll give a second.
Okay, let's do this with roll call. Ms. Dalton?
Aye.
Mr. Sis, Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Knight?
Uh.
Phil?
Aye.
Wait, should we also make a motion to advertise for a public hearing if the town attorney advises it necessary for the...
Section, uh...
Saves a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I would move that we advertise for a public hearing if the town attorney advises it necessary for...
For the next meeting.
Uh, yes, the next...
Regular council meeting.
Regular council meeting, or the next...
Yes, we, the, yes, we are going to have one because of the conference.
We'll be able to get an answer by...
That would be the twenty-sixth.
That's not two weeks of advertising then?
Normally, it costs you two weeks.
So it would be the next...
So the next, at, at the next regular meeting for the purpose of adopting the State Procurement Act.
Hard to say.
It really is.
Okay, there is a motion, uh, we want to go back over that. There is a motion to advertise...
Advertise for a public hearing if the town attorney advises it necessary to adopt the State Procurement Act.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second? Okay, it has been moved as seconded that we, we advertise to, um, plan to adopt the State Procurement Act at, uh, February, 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 two thousand and fifteens. Uh, let's do a fair roll call, just in case. Okay, uh, Dalton? Fisher?
Aye.
Knight?
Uh, aye.
Phil? The ayes have it. Mr. Town Manager?
Oh, yeah. Um, let's see. I, I want to start out, I'm going to try to get some money, or at least get you thinking in terms of money. Um, some of you know that we're having to clean our lagoons every war plan, um, more frequently. And the reason is, the best way I can describe it is that due to the proper treatment procedures that we, our operator down there now is doing, it's causing more, um, more of a backup in our lagoons that have to be cleaned while, um, the cost on that, we're set up in there right now to do one. Uh, a company called BioNomics is coming in to do it. What they'll do is, is suck out and clean the lagoon. Uh, they'll haul it to the airport where we allow, we're allowed to dump it and let it dry. It's not, there's nothing toxic about it. It contains mostly carbon, some alum, but there's, there's not a problem there. We clear all that with E Q. The cost is going to be roughly twenty-two thousand dollars. And from what John is telling me, he asked me, as a matter of fact, when they set up Friday, if we were going to do the other lagoon. Um, we just did the other lagoon about two years ago. So it looks like it's, we're looking at probably a twenty-two thousand dollar cost per year to do one lagoon every year. Okay. Here's what I'd like for us to think about, and I've talked this over to Tony quite a bit, and we think we've got a solution. Um, what we'd like to do is purchase a three thousand gallon, I'll call it a movable tank. Uh, we have locator to use, which is three thousand dollars. So metal structure on a trailer, we've got to buy the trailer, I mean, buy the, uh, tank, put tires on it. So we're looking at a cost of roughly forty-five hundred dollars to buy that. Um, let me back up just a little bit. Well, yeah, if, if we were to do that, we don't have the equipment right now to move that tank. Uh, we don't have strong enough equipment, like a tractor, to pull it, move it. So we'd have to rent, we'd rent the tractor, and right now the cost is fifteen hundred dollars a week. Um, that's the second part of my proposal, but this first part for me is looking forward. Um, the second part would be that we consider buying a tractor, um, that would do this job as well as other jobs that we have in town. And I've got some estimates on that, but again, we can try to do the, we feel like we could go out there maybe twice a year and, and clean each lagoon, and obviously we'll save a lot of money if we do that. So I'd, I'd like for council to consider that. Uh, I, I hate to put anybody on the spot, but it's the old situation, well, I've got somebody else looking at it. Uh, we've been told that the, that the tank is, somebody else is interested in it. If we won't, we better go in and move on. Uh, what we would do is carry our pump down, we've got a pump that would handle the pumping of it, pump it into the trailer, carry it to the airport and dump it. And we can do maybe, we figured maybe five, six loads a day, three thousand gallons. Uh, we could clean one, one lagoon in a week. And obviously, in the law run, we save a lot of money.
So this is in lieu of the twenty-two thousand for...
Um, the tractor, um, fifty to seventy thousand for the new tractor. Between fifty to, to fifty to seventy, it's, we got one, one bid, it was fifty-eight, one's around sixty-two. But we're, we're trying to be sure we got the right equipment, all of these are forward drive, ninety-five horsepower tractors that it would take to pull.
But we can rent one for fifteen hundred.
Rent it for fifteen hundred.
And it would take us about a week to clean it out.
Yeah, but you could also have that tractor we can move snow to. So you could use it.
There, there are different things.
Multi-uses.
Plus, we can use this tank also, we clean, we have to clean out our pump stations periodically. And right now, we use a thousand gallon tank, um, and haul that basically with pickup trucks. And the other thing is we've got a new jetter coming in here that is going, there's going to be certain situations where we're going to need indoor drive tractors to get it in and out of certain areas. I'm not saying buy the tractor right now. Um, we finished paying off the backhoe. Um, I would suggest if we consider it, then we borrow the money and pay for it that way. But right now, I'd like to go in and get y'all thinking real hard about this, this tank. Because this twenty-two thousand is going to go up every year.
Have you spoken with the John Lee Cooper, and it, this is, you have the new land?
Yes, yes, he, he needs it done more, more often. And part of the problem with the lagoons, just so everybody understands, is when they clean the filthy, they're putting, putting the backwash into the lagoons, the lagoons are settling. Uh, the solids settling the bottom, the top is okay to release into the creek. But obviously, the more that rises, the less ruin you have to do that. You can't suck out the solids and send them down the creek, D Q won't let you do that. We're okay with the liquids, but there's a floating intake that they have to monitor. And they monitor when they're discharging some of the lagoons, basically once an hour, to be sure that it's not discharging anything it shouldn't be. Even though it's not going to hurt anything, um, it's not toxic, they still want us to do that. So we don't really have any choice but to do it. The question is, do we want to try this, or we'll keep paying that company to come in and do it?
Right now, looking at the budget versus the actual, it shows that we have eighteen thousand, twenty-four dollars still...
For cleaning the gun.
Right, for cleaning the lagoons, that we have used eleven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars this year, that were, you know, what was budgeted in actual.
So we're, we're going to already lay over. Again, it's been a learning curve with John running the war plan down there, and, and right now, the problem, I don't know, it's not a problem, is the carbon that's being fed now that has greatly enhanced the quality of our work. But it's an additional chemical that is causing, you know, these lagoons to fill up. So it's a trade-off.
So if we were to purchase the, uh, the tank, please, where would that, uh, funding come from?
Uh, we'd have to find it in the budget.
Can it come out of the, this category?
Yes. And, and really, rightfully should, because that's what that, it'd just be a kind of, an exception to the law. But then, we'll more than make up for it next year. We can reduce, reduce that, you know, by now, yeah. We've talked a lot about it, I'll, I'll try to cover all the bases, what could go wrong, you know? Is there any reason why we shouldn't do this? We've talked a lot about it, I won't, I've tried to cover all the bases, what could go wrong, you know, is there any reason why we shouldn't do this? Can all this company come in, but, uh, I can't come up with any, you know, the only problem right now is the hog. And, again, we can rent a tractor, but, and some of you guys know more about it than I do, but you can't always get that kind of tractor. They just happen to have, like, right now, they have one, but, um, it sounds like an item that's not always there, they might have to get it from somewhere else, and, um, something to think about.
I'm all for buying the tank and renting the tractor right now, I'd rather wait until the comprehensive plan's in place before we look at bigger purchase like the tractor.
Well, we need, they need to get line item, next, or purchase the next, next year anyway, for the tractor.
Um, we can talk more about it when we move on.
I like, I like, we make a motion, we'll go in that, so, repair it, try.
And is there a second? It has been moved and seconded that the, for the purpose, purchase of the three-thousand gallon movable tank, four thousand five hundred dollar purchase, uh, all those.
About two, three thousand is the cost and the rest is two, okay.
Okay, okay.
Then include the, uh, trailer.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Three thousand for a gallon tank.
So the total budget would be four thousand?
Roughly forty-five.
Forty-five hundred. Any other questions? And all those in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Um, situation is weekend, it's not the first time that it's happened, so it's, it's brought to light. This time of year particularly, we have situations where people, the water lines will freeze, uh, bust, creates a problem, obviously. What we normally do is during, during our normal hours when we're here during the day, if somebody calls and wants us to come out and cut their water off so that they can have a repair, we do that. Weekends and nights, we don't. And the reason we don't is because we've got to pay an employee, uh, two hours basically, in pay to go out and do something like this. Sewer is a very similar situation, uh, although a little bit different in my mind. Sewer's a little more serious, if somebody's got sewer backing up in their house, um, that's, that's a problem. So, uh, what we would normally do is, well, here's the problem, people will call us first because they know we don't charge. We go out, we check our lines, our lines are clear, nobody's having any problems other than that person, then they say, well, I guess I need to call the plumber. So, we put sometimes three or four men out because they have to go get, typically go get the jetta, pop the manhole, which takes two men, run the lineup in there, and they don't hit anything, everything's fine, okay, setting up the picture here. But I've been thinking, if people've got a problem and, and, and they need help, and I understand that, my, my feeling is that we need to respond. But I think we need to charge them for that service. If somebody calls at night on the weekend, or water break, wants to come out and cut their water off, we gotta pay a man two hours, we charge them whatever it costs us for that man to go out. Sewer situation, if we go out and it is our line, no charge, if it isn't, then they get a charge, because we've had to pay somebody to go out and do that. And again, I want y'all to think about this, because I try to put myself in, in everybody's position, and if you have a water line bust at your house and water's going everywhere, uh, a lot of us would probably be running around panicked and didn't know what to do. So, they call the sheriff's department, sheriff's department doesn't really know what to tell them, so we're trying to come up with a solution here. Something y'all will think about, and if you say, well, how much would you charge them? Uh, I had forty dollars in mind, and that really doesn't cover the cost, send them out, who helps? You attach a charge to the utility bill, if you don't pay it, you cut your services off, just like you would if they didn't pay the water bill. So, think about that.
Are you talking that during regular business hours?
During regular hours, only, only, uh.
I got you.
I told the mayor today, I have a bunch of things, but I'm, I'm gonna narrow it down. We've been, we've been talking about, and I won't, I guess I won't test it, but we can, the possibility of doing this, uh, doing public announcements on certain ordinance. And specifically what I'm driving at is annual notice to all property owners of our grass ordinance. Currently, y'all, y'all know that our grass ordinance is ten inches, is the height, and we sent a letter at that point, give them ten days to cut the grass, and if they don't cut it, it's twenty days old at the very least, and it creates a really serious problem with us having to go out and cut it, usually two or three times, rake it, uh, weed it, four or five men, equipment. Then we send a bill for a hundred fifty dollars, and it doesn't get paid. So, what I was thinking, Tessie, can we put out a public letter saying March, February or March, every year that says, this is the grass ordinance, here's your, here's your warning. Then when we see one that gets outside of the ordinance, we just go by cutting it though. I don't know if we can do that or not, but I'd like for us to look into that. It's beginning to be a big, bigger problem each and every year. A lot of, there are a lot of vacancies around this town, which is well a problem, that's for another night, maybe, yeah. I think the mayor's gonna talk a little bit about that kind of thing, so. Anyway, these, these are just ideas, I guess because it's a new year, I'm thinking about some things, and, um, I'm not asking for any answers or anything tonight, just your thoughts, and, and maybe we can come back and, 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 again. The only other thing I had was, uh, remind everybody that normal leaves pick up will stop Friday the twenty-third. We still pick up leaves when they're bagged or boxed, and put, you know, the side they call, and stuff. And I got a lot more, but that's all I'm, that's all I can do.
Any questions for the town manager? You can tell we've had a, a, a period from where we haven't been together. Town and town.
Yes, nothing really new to report this morning on the same issues as usual, derelict buildings, taxes, things like that. I will look into the, you know, issue minute, and I'll also look into, you know, doing public announcements. I know one thing that we could do is shorten the, um, timing, or, if we can't just do a public announcement, but I'm wondering, you know, I'll, I'll take a look at it for a minute.
Does anybody have any questions for the town attorney?
'Cause I have several.
Okay.
Here we go, this is, okay, these were questions that had come up in, in my mind, Anne, and the town manager and I discussed it. It's, it's pertaining to when we have taken down a derelict house.
Yes.
Who owns that property after the town has?
The property owner owns the property, and at the point when the town incurred the expense, the town would have a lien on that property for the actual cost incurred in tearing that down. And the lien on that property is on the same parity as local taxes, which means that the town, you know, the town could sell it, you know, let's pretend like the only lien that was on there was for local taxes, which, I mean, for the cost of tearing that down. That's usually not the case, because chances are, if you had a derelict building, it probably has delinquent taxes too. So, the only way the town could own the property or change that ownership of the property is by going through the motions, having a tax sale, and then either, you know, through Jim Elliott, selling it to someone else, or buying it back. So, the answer is no, the town does not own it unless there is some sort of a judicial sale that would change ownership.
Okay, so, in other words, from my understanding, when, when we have selected a, a building and have gone through the process, and have spent the taxpayers' money, any recoup would have to be if we have it, you know?
Or, you know, you could enforce that lien through other judicial processes that are available to the town. But it would not change who was the owner of the property unless you had a sale.
So the owner, the owner still could let anything happen to that first, that piece of property? Okay, that, that was my, my first question, okay. What about if someone comes into town hall and says that, uh, they no longer can afford to take care of their house? Their house is paid for, but, um, they just are turning off the, the services and all, and they're just leaving town? Does the town then have to wait till they've incurred an expense to put a lien on it? What, what happens to property then when they just get up and move?
They would own the property unless they sold the property to someone else. So the only way that you can transfer property, pretty much with a few exceptions, would be a deed. Now, there certainly would be nothing to prohibit if the town wanted to get into that business thing, well, you know, and leave any further charges, just quit cleaning the house over to me, that wouldn't be a problem, but if you were to do that, there are several risks that we would have to go through, environmental testing, and, you know, doing a thorough title search to really make sure that the town has applied any sort of a liability, but yes, unless the person would deed that property to someone else, then it would be theirs.
Because they still would incur if the grass grew and we had to, to cut the grass, and also when somebody comes in and says, you know, I give up, I can't afford to live here, I'm just leaving, and we just have to wait and see how it plays out, right?
Yes, what would need to happen is the same process essentially as the derelict buildings, which is incurring lien, put the lien on the property. If, if it's grass, for example, it's still on the same parity as local taxes, so it's put again, be the alternative tax sale. Of course, the caveat and the issue with that is, is that if you have a tax sale, the taxes have to be delinquent for two years, or, you know, another lien that's on the same parity, and has to be two years.
In order to protect the individual who has been in that.
Right, yeah.
Okay, and, um, this is my last question, did, did, are you all following what I have asked? Okay, and, and we're going back to the trash can codes, have, have we come up with a final code? I think, I think we had, had given it to you, and, yeah, that, and you were going to check something?
Yes, and I still have, you know, the revisions to the trash can ordinance, the same as I had before, just some issues that, you know, the town wanna think about that I given to Wade, that the town needs to think about when there's a trash in the ordinance. You know, 'cause I had the proposed ordinance, looked at it, and came up with those revisions, just some things for you all to think about when the trash.
So, you know, we could sort of bring that to a culmination with, you know, the, the group, 'cause that spring is coming, and.
Just a quick suggestion on that, if we can have that for our workshop, just to review it so we can advertise for public hearings, since we'll be advertising for public hearing anyway?
Because I did have those changes, just to make sure that they're covered, and, you know, the town does define, um, you know, the definitions that they had appropriately, so certainly, you know, if there's a revision of the ordinance, if we're bringing my suggestions and you all wanna shoot me an email with it, I'll be glad to look at it again.
So we, we need to review, take your suggestions, and go back and look at what we need, what we wanted to do, and either incorporate them all, whatever. Come up with the actual orders before we go into public hearing.
Yeah, you definitely need to have the ordinance before you go into public hearing if you're going to adopt the ordinance after the public hearing at that session, because you have to have a copy of the ordinance that the town has for the, for the.
I think I gave y'all copies, and I didn't, yeah, um, and there, there are some valid points that Tessie brings up that we discussed too. So, we probably need to look at that again.
First, let me know, and if you all want me to be present for, if maybe, you know, whatever needs to happen, I'll be glad to do it.
Anything else for the town attorney? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports, committee development.
Yes, I, um, am still wanting to go back over the holidays, because I think they have to be especially happy times. And I thought our ventures, our businesses here improved, the people seemed to pull more together than I was thinking before. And I don't know whether that was my spirit adding to it, but it was a very happy thing. And we started with the parade, which we spoke about on our last meeting, and then we went on, uh, to the decorations at the park, at Burke Park. Just lovely, and particularly meaningful were the memorial trees, just beautiful. So, coming in and out of proof of the holidays, we put on a good show, and it really looked good up and down the highway. And some of the homes, the people were eagerly decorating. So it was a very happy atmosphere, and I wanted to comment on the police video that was on Facebook. I thought it was very appropriate, I, it could have gotten even into a little bit more of the dance mode. But it was a happy thing, and I may comment because it seemed fun. But the more tense your job is, the more important it is to have that moment, to sit back and just say something silly. And if you didn't see it, it was on Facebook, and it's worth seeing, I don't know if you keep a copy.
You didn't.
Also, I bring to point Phil's Christmas card was over. This was when they took pictures over on the trains. And it turned, uh, great, I don't know how many of you mentioned it, we talked about it, uh, how many people took advantage of that. But it reminded me of the time that, um, Wade and his wife were on the garbage truck, a new one. It's, it's fun, and it's fun because we have a whole lot of serious things we have to tend to, all of us, very serious. And so that moment that'll just crack you up, which I think we had one earlier today, is, um, and you all have seen all the business that was up at Stratford Lewis Project, it's on its way, it's a well-oiled machine. I've been going back over the things today, and it's step by step what is to take place. They've done this so many times that they are so familiar with it, and of course, uh, Wade's name is centered on the bottom of it, so he's hell responsible. But it, it is, it's going to happen, it's happening, and that's a happy thing. So we've started off the year correctly, and I'm very appreciative of all of that.
Any questions that we can discuss? Economic development.
Thank you, mayor, uh, very briefly, uh, those of you who were here will recall this time last year, I presented, uh, goals that I wanted to get accomplished for the, uh, for twenty fourteen, uh, what you, the first sheet you have in front of you is a, uh, set of, is basically the status of each one of those goals, uh, just going through them very vertically for, for the audience at the camera. Goal one, codify and organize ordinances in single document, and a lot of these goals, uh, aren't, weren't just me, they, they were a joint effort by all of council, and, um, you know, e- e- everyone here gets all the credit for, uh, all of these. But codify and organize ordinance, ordinances in single document, that's completed and ongoing, we sent, as you know, we sent the, uh, uh, company down in Florida, all of our ordinances, and they're going to be putting them online. Partner with the, the Rec Association to increase the availability of outdoor facilities. Uh, Steve, uh, got together with the volleyball, uh, group, and, uh, really made that, uh, that, that happen, so that was, uh, that's, that's great. Uh, increased tourism, that's, uh, ongoing, uh, we're gonna have a tourism event scheduled for early twenty fifteen. Encourage local buying, uh, that's completed and ongoing with the grocery community. Encourage local buying, that's completed, ongoing with the Grocery Community Collaborative. Analyze the flat water and sewer rates for businesses and the water rates for the state assets, those are all ongoing, the engineers are currently looking into it as we now. Develop a community profile for business owners, that's ongoing, and the county profile is available on our website. Keep an updated list of business information on the town's website, that's completed, ongoing, it's currently available on the website, as is the, and it's also organized by Goods and Services provided. Organize a roundtable discussion with Main Street property owners, identify vulnerabilities in attracting and growing business. We've had two major employer, I'm sorry, we've had one small business, Main Street Group, and I've gone together with a few of those individuals, and we've met with Downtown Blackstone. As you'll see, as I'll mention in my 2015 goals, we'd like to keep that going and formalize that group this year. Develop a community profile for potential business owners, again, county profile's on the website, so that's ongoing, and create a marketing strategy for town that's going to fall in line with the tourism. Continue the HEAL efforts, that's completed, ongoing. The police department is going to be taking a big part in the, in the HEAL efforts, I've been talking to Investigator Turner about that. We've had our YMCA partnership established. I've been working closely with the Piedmont Regional Health Coalition in a regional healthy eating act of living effort. And I've also presented the town's HEAL initiative at the most recent VML conference. Create new community HEAL activities, that's ongoing, and I'm starting to formulate, again, in my 2015 goals, plans for a senior league and more YMCA activities. Determine the viability of a pedestrian crossing from the north side, of course, if it's south and or near the park, that's completed, ongoing. Be it approved, the crosswalk, all we need to do now is buy the money for it. Increase government communication transparency, publish budget online, create a common suggestion box at Town Hall. We're in the process of putting the budget online, it's up there, we just need to, we're going to do the spaces there for it, we just need to get it on there. And the common suggestion box has been at Town Hall for, for a little while now. Increase town community communication, we've increased the Facebook participation to over 500 before the end of the year. Great job, I, I know Tiffany helped with that, the police department, in promoting our Facebook page, so we now have over 500 followers on Facebook. And we also put our council meetings on YouTube. Create an annual report to showcase accomplishments and challenges to town Facebook in previous and upcoming years, that is currently incomplete. Establish mediation arbitration system for few neighbors, there were some logistical issues with that, so that's also incomplete. Continue to eliminate plate, standardize processes using recent events as case study for determining best practice, and that is ongoing as we just talked about. Increase outreach for military families and employees of local state facilities, that's ongoing through our major employer roundtables. We've had Port Pickett at our first one, they couldn't make the second one, became the first one, and that's where we're, plans are on the way for brown bag lunches and establishing different quality of life comparisons, cost comparisons, living here versus living in say Chester, commuting to work. So that's going to be in the 2015 goals. Complete Hankstown History Story Series project, that's ongoing, that's going to be a, one of the projects of the Nodway Historical Association this year. Continue social media efforts, and ease Facebook participants, as I mentioned, over 500 likes, and we have a trivia contest that we've been doing, which is this art project I've been doing over here for the better part of the meeting. Expand YouTube page to feature events around town, interviews with local residents, visitors, and other useful information, we didn't quite get to that one this year. Implement a biannual townwide neighborhood cleanup, that's ongoing. The Chamber had a, had a downtown cleanup at the Rec Four Homecoming. So, in all, complete, ongoing, we have 13, ongoing are 11, and incomplete just four. So that's the status of 2014. 2015, my goals for, for next year. Under economic development, work with Virginia Tourism to host tourism workshops, and we'll use the data from workshops to establish a tourism and marketing plan. Encourage local buying, we'll do that by continuing the Grocery Community Collaborative and working with the High School Marketing Department to create attractive pamphlet listing goods and services provided by collaborative members. And work with Chamber of Commerce and High School Marketing Department to create an attractive Nodway Antique Trail pamphlet, which I may have mentioned in previous meetings, I'll go into more of that in a, in subsequent meetings. Work with the county to develop a Crewe community profile for potential business owners, so we can have both county profile and the Crewe profile online. Maintain a list of business information on the town's website, formalize the Main Street Group, create a biannual major employer, continue to biannual major employer roundtable discussions, including, as we mentioned, the developing the quality of life cost of living comparisons for employees, and planning to execute brown bag lunches for the employees. Under Healthy Eating Act of Living, work with the police department to create specific HEAL goals and projects for 2015, expand partnership with YMCA by bringing their programs to Crewe, create senior leagues and activities, and budget for the crosswalk to the park. Under strength and, strength and trust in and efficiency of local government, purchase video camera for recording council meetings, put all past council meeting audio recordings online, and that includes digitizing all the analog recordings, boxes and boxes we have up in the second floor of the Town Hall. Create an annual report to showcase accomplishments and challenges to town Facebook in previous and upcoming years, we mentioned that briefly at the last meeting, hopefully we'll be able to get that up and running this year. Continue to eliminate plate, create a flow chart of the building condemnation process so that anyone can easily see the process visually and see where we are in the process and timeframes associated with that. And increase in, of course, increase the efficiency in that process. And then further engage tenses and visitors, expand the YouTube page to feature events around town, interviews with local residents, visitors, and other useful information, work with local organizations, implement biannual townwide neighborhood cleanup, create informational pamphlet out of town, and plan to execute a focus group to identify improvements to the town website. So a lot of these are continuing the work last year, a few new things, a few things that didn't quite make it to fruition last year, and a few new things. So those are the goals for 2015. Speaking of the trivia contests, as you know, we started early last year with a weekly trivia contest on Facebook where we, each Monday morning at around seven in the morning, we would put up a trivia question on, about the history of the town, all taken from Work Corey's book, The History of Crewe. And the first person to answer correctly would be put into an, into a drawing at the end of the year. We, from that, we had several people win different weeks. Abby Messer had one win, Alice Chapel had 10 wins, Barbara Anderson had one, Brendan Fender won, Chad Gable won, Cindy Saylor Church won, our own Ella Turner had five, James Redford three, Jenna Gray one, Jennifer Madden one, Kewana Isan Vany, I can't read my own handwriting, had one, Liz Mills one, Lucy Spencer one, three, and Rob Staler one. So tonight I'd like to do a drawing, if I can borrow someone's hat.
It's just since then, I've known one day.
And actually, the prizes we have are, for first place, we have Memories of the Golden Days of Crewe, Virginia by Pi McCann, and a $25, or, I'm sorry, $20 gift certificate to Bravos. And second place gets, again, the same book and a $5 gift certificate to Bravos. So, Mr. Gunter, if you would do the honors. First place winner? First place goes to, when I came from that, Kewana Isan Vany. Does anyone know? Okay, well, let's pick the second place, and then a third place, just in case. Thank you, second place, James Redford. And third place, in case one of the two can't make it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gunter. Chad Gable.
I know we were eligible, I could have won it.
Anyone who, what, who is an administrator on Facebook, yeah, because I had some of the answers up there, yeah. Okay, um, uh, the YMCA meeting we had last month was, was really good, there was good participation from that, and again, we'll, we'll have more information out on the Diabetes Prevention Program, so look forward to that. The Economic Development Committee meeting, I will have to let everyone know when we'll meet. With my new job, I'm starting a flex scheduling, so I'll be working four 10-hour days, one day off a week, which means I won't be back in time for night meetings, but one day a week I can devote totally to town things. So probably the fourth Monday sometime during the day, if that's good with everyone, but I'll get with everyone. I just know that the third Monday we won't have a meeting, we'll figure out how to proceed with that. VML Day at the Capitol's coming up, we may want to see who's going to that. And Fast C, there's a public information session on the 26th at 7:00 at UMass.
And there should be, down at the Spence Library in Blackstone, there should be a hard copy of information that was put down there, the latter point of last week. I looked online and didn't find it, I think I had.
And that's all I have.
Facilities, parks, recreation.
Nothing really going on, park looked great during Christmas, and about it.
Any questions? Okay, finance?
Everything seems to be in order, all feels to be fine.
Any questions of finance? Okay, public works and infrastructure.
I don't have anything.
Okay, okay, personnel, our vice mayor is sort of under the weather tonight, so we will skip on public safety. Fisher?
I don't have a whole lot, y'all should have in front of you. 2014 summer, Nodway County Bridge squad, as you can tell, that just totaled 2,456 calls, requiring 57,000, excuse me, 944 man hours, I mean miles, man hours, 9,417. And the breakdown of the hospital totals are right below that, as you can see, Bonneville Hospital received 1,231 patients, St. Francis, 326, Community Memorial, which is South Hill, 156, Chippenham, 55, Johnson-Buss, 25, and Sideside Regional Medical Center at Petersburg, 26. Of course, they had a very busy year of last year, and as I said, back sometime before the end of last year, we're planning on purchasing two new ambulances sometime this year, providing we come up with the money and the budget. Hopefully by next meeting, I'll have a report from the fire department, reference to that calls, Beverly said she would give me the information on that, so hopefully by next meeting, I'll have a report on the fire department. And as long as the police goes, I will let Chief Booten have that in his report, that's all that comes up, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the safety? Okay, the town Crewe Comprehensive Plan update, our vice mayor did send us some work to do, and this is for the upcoming work session on January 26th, will be at 7:00 p.m. So, let's see here, three, that one, and two, three, that one, you one, and one, one myself. And she said that Kelly Lewis has a draft as well, and she is willing to attend our work session when we go over what we have, and please ask council to review our goals and objectives and strategies, and make any suggestions or revisions they feel we need to discuss. So, you know, she has given us a whole work assignment that if we can do this, and said that we can iron it out at the work session, which will be January 26th, and then we can move on to our timeline. So she said, if you have any questions, we could get back to that. So, I, Tiffany brought us these this evening, I haven't had a chance to look over. I hope you have read, though, the comments that she handed out in December in that little, it was a, a little booklet that had the papers in there of all, of what the town planner, all the comments and all. I went over a lot of the comments, and if it was some things that had to be done with speeding and things like that, I have already notified the police that, you know, areas that the citizens have concerns of, but all the citizens' comments were in there. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that yet with the, the holidays, please do so before our January 26th meeting. Okay, I'm sorry, please, chief, would you like to have one, because I think, I think that that's inside for you too. All right, moving on, police chief report.
As many of you know, we had several vehicles that were drawn into the past, special rightful purpose that were broken into. Vehicles were left unlocked, there was no damage or broken entering to these vehicles. But with the efforts of Officer Kinslow that was here and Detective Turner, we were able to identify the suspect and make an arrest on three suspects. They are juvenile, so I can't release any further information than that, but an arrest has been made. Finally, we are the proud national award winner for National Night Out again this year. One. That's two years in a row. Thank you guys for supporting us on this. We're going to hang this up in Town Hall beside our other one, so we're very proud. Yes, yes. Want to look at it, right there.
And the nice thing about that evening is that it is not money that's in the budget to do it, it is money that the community brings forth to, you know, help support this, so it means that, that the officers and all also have to, you know, gradually push it.
The volunteers that participate, my father and my mother, of course, are there every year, dad cooks hamburgers and hot dogs, and not just them, but Mr. Watts comes out, and I have a couple more family members that come out, and, but everybody that volunteers and that donates, makes monetary donations, even some of the businesses this year didn't necessarily give us money, but they donated 10 cases of drinks, which is better than money in, in a lot of ways, so we couldn't do it without council support, and we definitely couldn't do it without the community support. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We look forward to it, everybody.
Any questions at the police chief on anything? December? Moving on to my report, one of the first things that I wanted to do is publicly thank a few people, as with Mrs. Dalton, we're still getting through the Christmas holidays, but the employees, after our meeting last month, the employees had an employee dinner, and there's two groups that I wanted particularly to thank. TJ mentioned it this morning, and I had, I had thought about doing it previously, but it made it all the more pertinent to do it. One is Big T, that family, it's unbelievable what they contribute to the community, but they, they provided the chicken and the rolls for that evening, and that, that was so nice. I want you to know that taxpayer money did not come I want you to know that taxpayer money did not come out of the budget. There was no taxpayer money. There was contributions to help make the employee dinner, you know, extra special. And the second one is that we had a community center, which you know the Spences own, and they just charged a very, very small amount of money to give us a really nice evening. When I say us, the town council and the employees and their family. It's such a special night because we go through the year and we see our employees. But lots of times, we don't get to see their spouses or their children and all. And it's so nice to see them all come together and to have a nice evening. And on top of that, the community center was so pretty, and it had the fireplace over there. And Santa Claus came. And Santa Claus had presents that had come from their, you know, the children's families. And that was just really, really special to see the children, young and old, where mom and dad had helped Santa with a special present for them. And, you know, some of the little ones, their eyes all big and all. And that just was a very nice evening. And I appreciate the employees didn't work during that evening, you know, to have it going. They just didn't sit back. They, you know, they assisted and all, and it was wonderful. And I'm so glad that we had so many participate this year, you know, and I wanted to thank them. Another thing is that I had suggested back at the beginning of December and all that we're a small community. And I feel that it's important that when we have, you know, different times of year and all, to remember those that maybe can't get out in our community and all. So I went to the police department and I asked them if by chance that maybe if I got some hot chocolate. And it was just an idea. Got some hot chocolate and something. Could they, you know, take around on their patrols, you know, those that don't get out and all? But, you know, just to make a little bag. Well, that blossomed into, you know, creativity from, and it's Detective Turner, and Ms. Redmond, and all of the police. It sort of blossomed. And they decided, they checked with the fire station, and I had some cookie mix. And they got involved. And they had cooking with the police on the Sunday. Then they decorated the cookies and made the bags and all. And I have gotten a lot of people saying how nice it was. They wanted, you know, the town to know that they really appreciated it. And I think that the police department had received two thank you cards, too, that people have sent. One was from Fran Knight that she sent to the police station. And the other one was from Lucille Williams. Williams said, she is not well, but through her family and all. And she signed it. She sent a personal note. And I just felt like that that made the year. From what I've heard, when I go in church and all, people have said that it went over well. And good things about the video. You know, I know there's always the naysayers that says, well, you know, you shouldn't do this, you shouldn't do that. But it involved our businesses too. And it didn't take a lot of time. It was a very minimal time. Didn't take any equipment but a cellphone. And I was very appreciative for all, you know, and that the businesses were a major part of that and all. It's not something that I would encourage for us to do all the time, because it's just a special thing and there's just that time. So I wanted to thank, and I wanted to thank, I wanted to thank the town, all the town employees, because it, you know, in their daily lives, whether it's broken water mains, whether it's an IRA customer or trying to get the bills paid and all the, I just think we have exceptional employees that work for us and help keep, and I mean us as citizens and all. And even for us, they help keep us going here on Town Council. And you all here around me, I just, I don't think this town could have asked for seven more fire individuals to red for office. I, you know, y'all are just really tops. And even when we always don't get along and all, that it's for the good. It makes each one of us better. And I'm just real proud of this town. And I look forward to a whole grand new year. So I will be quiet now and we'll, oh, I do have on business. Going back to the question about Maryland Avenue. I said at December meeting that I had talked to our Board of Supervisor representative here in Crewe. I went to him personally. Phil corresponded the lovely letter, but I thought that maybe I would go in person. And at that time, he said he would try to get it on the agenda. And I believe some of you who went to the Board of Supervisors found that nothing was said. So I went back this morning and our Board of Supervisor said that what has transacted on East Maryland Avenue, the house, is that Wells Fargo did send the forms to the Board of Supervisors to be signed, that they have been filled out and sent back. And I said, well, what is the plan? And he called, he called up Mr. Rourke. And the next step is when they get those forms back, they are going to have someone. And he said the gentleman's name, and I did not recognize it. So, and I didn't write it down at that time. But they are going to have a home inspection. They want to know what is all wrong with the property so that the property can be brought up to, you know, good specifications so that they can put it on the market and sell it. And that was what, you know, my understanding today was. And since our supervisor is not here, I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but he did tell me that he was so sorry that they never, I mean, they did not know that we also had been called and that, you know, he would never have reacted and, you know, made a motion like that if he knew that we had also had the contact and all. And so right now is where it stands. I wanted to remind you that this week is also the Board of Supervisors meeting on this Thursday. And also important dates tomorrow night from 5:00 to 7:30. Pickett Park Officers Club is the Atlantic Gas Pipeline meeting. And on January 19th, you all got a letter about the Dr. King's birthdays celebration at the Civic League. If you have any questions for me. New business?
Mayor, I have a piece of new business. Last meeting, we met with Delegate Wright and Senator Rock. And one thing, one of our biggest concerns that we relate to them was the, was V C B R and releasing sexually violent predators into the Crewe community. Those who have no previous connection to Crewe, releasing them here because, simply because, for a large part of the reason being, it's a convenient location for them to be in proximity to V C B R. So with V C B R, now I will say that they have come to our major employer roundtable. The employees there are great. They do communicate with us. It's just on this one issue when they release someone that we don't have a whole lot of communication with them. So with that, I drafted a resolution that I'll go ahead and read, and then I'll answer any questions in a half. It reads, whereas the Virginia Center for Behavioral Rehabilitation, V C B R, has its sexually violent predators, S D Ps, individuals determined by courts to be of such a high risk of reoffending that they are involuntarily committed to a mental health institution following their prison sentence. And whereas, as of April 2011, over 75% of those under civil commitment were convicted of at least one of three predicate crimes, aggravated sexual battery rate, and forced pulsotomy. And whereas, treatment of sexually violent predators does not eliminate, but may reduce the risk of new sexual offenses by helping sexually violent predators better control their behavior. And whereas, currently prior to release, sexually violent predators are required to create home plans, which include pre-release discussions with landlords, family, potential employers, and the probation parole office that would be providing supervision of the residents once released. And whereas, while they have no direct connection with the region, whereas while they have no direct connection with the region prior to commitment, multiple sexually violent predators have been released into the Crewe and Ottawa communities due in large parts of communities proximity to V C B R. And whereas, the release of sexually violent predators into the Crewe and Ottawa communities occurred without any direct communication between V C B R and local government and law enforcement. And whereas, current statutes do not require local governments or law enforcement to be informed of the release of sexually violent predators in the community. And whereas, the presence of sexually violent predators in the community makes Crewe a less desirable place to live, raise a family, and own and operate a business. Now therefore be resolved that the Crewe Town Council Mayor do hereby respectfully request that our state delegate and senator sponsor and or support any legislation in the 2015 General Assembly session that would limit the sexually violent predators released in Ottawa County to those with pre-existing positive connections to the area, as well as any legislation that would require local governments and law enforcement to be included in pre-release home plan discussions. And be resolved further that the Clerk of the Town and Crew prepare our copies of this resolution for presentation to State Delegate Tommy Wright, State Senator Frank Rock, the Virginia Municipal League, Secretary of Health and Human Resources, Commissioner for the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and the Director of the Virginia Center for Behavioral Rehabilitation. So essentially, we would be urging the delegate and senator to support legislation that would do two things. One, limit the sexually violent predators who are released into the community, into the Crewe area, to those who have pre-existing connections to Crewe area. Because right now, their choices are, you know, go somewhere where you have pre-existing connections or go where it's convenient. So a lot of them, or some of them may choose to go where it's convenient to find a place to live and work, which just happens to be Crewe. While we do like productive citizens and understand that these individuals have served their sentences and have undergone treatment, nevertheless, being here does, essentially it increases the number of sex offenders on the sex offender registry in the Crewe area, which a family coming in and who wants to move to Crewe may look at that registry, say, well, there's quite a few sex offenders in the area with some of these crimes like aggravated sexual battery rate and forced pulsotomy. So it would limit the individuals' release to those with pre-existing positive connections to the area. And it would also ask that local governments and our local police department be included in the pre-release home plan discussions, much like landlords, family, potential employers, and probation parole office are already currently included in those discussions. And I'll answer any questions.
I agree. And it would eliminate the one that we discussed last year that came, that did not have any connections with this area.
Well, this would apply to new, well, depending on how, if the delegate and senator do propose legislation, and if that legislation does go through the General Assembly. Depending on how it's written, it would probably only apply to new releases.
Okay. But we don't want to get an overload for a smaller community. And I agree with that. I think it's good.
So it's, we just don't want to be, for lack of a better term, a dumping ground because we're simply convenient to V C B R.
Any other comments?
Excuse me, I think some good information here. I think it's about the town attorney looking through it. Oh, it's what he's read. He can make sure we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed.
Well, this is simply, this is simply a resolution that would urge our delegate and senator to propose legislation. The only problem with waiting is the General Assembly session starts on Wednesday. Crossover is at the end of the month, meaning that no new legislation would be, could be proposed after the end of the month. So if we want to look at this for this year, we'd have to go back this night. Not sit on until 1:16.
I think it's safe to go with me. Like you said, you're only making suggestions for the second body. And if they wanted to reify the things, then it would be so. But we're just saying this is what we would want.
And all of this information came from an April 2011 report issued by the J L R, the Joint Legislative Audit Review Commission, a state agency that does a lot of reports.
Do I have a motion? Okay.
Actually, we can have a roll call.
Okay, it has been briefed and seconded that this resolution be sent to the State Delegate Tommy Wright, State Senators Frank Rock, the Virginia Municipal League, Secretary of Health and Human Resources, Commissioner of the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, and the Director of the Virginia Center for Behavior Rehabilitation. Any other questions? Okay, I will call for a roll call. Ms. Dalton? Ms. Fisher?
While I do, very, no. While I do very much support this, which is why I propose it, I do work for the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, so I do need to abstain out of putting overabundance of caution.
You voted, didn't you?
Yes, but I didn't vote yet.
The motion is carried. Okay. Any other new business?
Yeah, one item.
Okay, yes, sir.
We've been looking into putting new garage doors on the old firehouses. And we have gotten prices on them. Got them two places so far. And I kind of want to put something back. Like what's on there with the, you know, with the panels on it, like we got it with the glass across top. It's gonna probably be less than $3,600 or less, maybe, but replace both doors. In a standstill, about whether to put, just like a regular aluminum door or put a insulated door. I mean, that's kind of what can I, if anybody had any input, what they think should be good. It'd be a hard idea if you do it insulated.
What's wrong with the ones now, other than they're hardened up?
They fall apart.
They are.
Would this, would this $3,600 include the?
Installation, yeah.
Well, the, no, the track.
No, not open, no.
Track.
Oh, yeah.
Because I think that has been a big, major problem too, was that track that.
Yeah, so you get springs on the side. You have to have a spring in the middle and it just pulls it straight. So it's gonna be a hard, but I tell you the reason why we need this thing. There's, we got this new equipment coming in for the sewer project, and we're gonna be putting it up there when we need to secure it.
Yeah, I'm all, I was just wondering.
If I can just bring something up, just may want to change some things. I know that council voted and approved for that building to be renovated for the new police department. So if you put the doors on it now, change that? Yeah, I don't know if that makes a difference or not.
Well, if you're going for a grant, that would be part of your specs, that you, this would be in with it, which I would think would make it important.
It would be. There's no grant out there, but yeah. But I don't know if that makes a difference or not. I want to make sure.
Well, that was, that was in the discussion too. The next discussion was if we're not gonna get any money to build, to relocate the police department, or we got, you know, we will probably have to haze this.
Right. I mean, I'm not questioning it. I just want to make sure it goes through five without any issues.
I think your question too was that whether we needed just plain doors, what was the feeling, or insulated doors.
That's right, pretty much with the raised panel and the window across.
I think that was his question.
If we don't know what it's going to be used for, we don't know what kind of a bus we're gonna get.
Well, I think there was.
What we want is a door that we can open and close. And one that we secure. Right now, there's no way to do the other one.
I'll ask the question then. What, will the equipment that we store in there need insulation? Insulation, or would it be just fine?
Not only if you're gonna, unless you're gonna maybe put some heat in there too, because it is gonna have the seal around it, around it. too, because it is going to have the seal around it, around it, you know, the way the seals, the way no air can go inside. But there again, we have roof problems too, and roof needs to be looked at, so we need to make some decisions on that building.
Counsel, do you want to continue with the doors or?
That's something, good, good thought, you know, we'll bring it up in the works actually.
All right. Any other continuing business?
A piece of continuing business, Mayor. Several months ago, we mentioned, or we, we had a discussion on recording council meetings, and it, the motion was made and, and approved that we do it, but reevaluate at the end of the year and possibly look at buying, purchasing a camera of our own, since we are borrowing Tiffany's. Since we started that, we've had a, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but a lot of people view, view it, they, they appreciate it, we've had comments from our citizens, people who really appreciate having these council meetings available for you online because they can't always make it out to, to meetings. We've had comments from people in Blackstone who wish that their council would put meetings on, make them available online for you and for, for, uh, just having there in the future if they ever want to go back. So I would suggest that we continue this in perpetuity and authorize the purchase of a camera, not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Does, does anybody have any direct information on cameras? Have, you know, any research been done?
A camcorder like that would-
Pardon?
It shouldn't go over five hundred dollars.
Yeah, no, it's a-
By no means so.
I, I'd say three hundred, but I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm, I'm very, well, I can always come back with, well, assuming Tiffany lets us borrow it one more month, I can always come back next month with more reasonable figures and more, more firm figures. But I, are, if we're all in agreement, or a majority of us are in agreement, that we continue with the, with the project.
Can you just lease mine out?
Can you, can you tell how many hits do you have on the, how many hits do you, you only have for a month?
Uh, it depends, the first month we had well over a hundred. grocery community collaborative was not as many. Council meetings can have more because I, I also include links in, on the YouTube page, on the Facebook page and all, in the town email. If you want exact numbers, I can't believe the exact numbers right now because I-
Do you have, do you have fifteen, twenty per month or a hundred and fifty per month?
Uh, honestly, I haven't looked at it since, I, I haven't looked at the actual bits.
So we had a hundred and nineteen the first month?
First month, right. And, yeah, well, I'll stop at that.
I think it's excellent. And I think that the more people, and especially in the winter time when all the woods that pass, it's a wonderful resource for the information.
More people with families who, you know, don't want to find babies that are to come to the council.
That's a great idea, I think things are going to happen.
Could you come back next month with specific?
Sure.
And is, is that all right with council if we take it to next month? Make a decision?
Perfect.
Okay. Any more continuing business? Okay, citizens' comments we'd like to give you, you've been through our, our meeting, we are going to go in closed session shortly, do you, is there anyone who has a comment? Yes, sir.
Count, then, on Stran Street first, open bids is going to be for local, local contractors, but you're going to hire, as a general contractor, going to bid on the whole project? Is he going to hire local people to work on it, or is he going to bring outside crews? I just couldn't understand it.
That's, it would be advertised publicly and anybody that's interested in-
I mean, some of it, sometimes a general contractor, like the flooring, the plumbing, does that handle by a general contractor or by a small individual contractor?
I'm not exactly sure how they're going to advertise for the bids, but certainly it will be in the paper and open to any, anybody that wants to bid.
Yeah, but it's a sixty thousand over, you don't have to bid, but most flooring, like I can put flooring in houses, you know, some houses are four hundred dollars each, just one house, the floor is maybe ten thousand. So, you know, there's no chance of flooring, I can bid on it, it's sixty thousand over, you know, so it costs a little, a little help. And that's a, a contractor brings his own crew from out, you know.
Or hires you as a sub.
Yeah, or hires you as a sub. A lot of times they're hiring, I know my contractor hires legal agents, but it's kind of disappointing because, you know, taxpayers are paying them grant money, they don't hire citizens. So I'm just trying to keep that in mind, I thought it'd be nice to try to hire local people, if they got a good rapport and they'll book business right. And I wanted to copy that Phil's letter, it's very interesting because we have nursing staff that are very concerned about sexual predators. And we get that letter, and you have all the nurses, they park in lobby, some of the Rockman Wright themselves, call, give them a call, because they're very concerned about sexual predators in Crewe themselves. Thank you.
Now forget it. Now forget it. I do, I would like to hear Chief Booth's comment on the blue light week.
The past week, I think it was January first through January seventh, there was, I guess, for lack of a better word, a movement for people to display a blue porch light out in front of the residents for the week to show support of police officers. And I believe it started on Facebook and it just took off from there. We saw several blue lights around town, and we do appreciate it, we noticed.
Are you going to advertise it for next year?
Next year, I think we'll have something on, yes.
I think that's great.
Yes.
Can't hardly find them either.
And we've been trying, we've been trying for two weeks. Yes, yes. In Richmond, we even looked in Richmond.
Wow.
Yes.
I did the Sharpie thing.
Oh, we did, we did the Sharpie thing.
Turn green.
We found you that.
I was at work with-
And we've continued growing out, which we're not covering them off after this.
I learned, I have no idea how to get into my porch light.
Thank you. Any other comments? We are going into closed session for consultation with legal counsel, specific legal matters requiring the advice of counsel. Section two, two dash three, seven, one, one, dot, A, dot, seven.
Mayor, I'd also like to include two point two dash three, seven, one, one, A, three,
Do you like it, just for a week, or are they going to keep that for, is that here?
I think it was just for a week, but, which I didn't know about it until after the week got passed, and then we're going to do it, it'll just be later.
Yeah, I mean, I got a light anyway, I can't buy a blue one, because my light blew out. So I just put a blue one in.
All in favor certified by I. Okay, I have a motion to certify that we have complied with the act. Okay, I'll do a roll call. Ms. Dalton?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher? Mr. Knight?
Who made the motion?
Are you telling me to come into closed session?
No, certify.
Certify.
Yeah, we, we just, huh?
Oh, it's Alan, here.
Roll call.
I didn't hear her. Yes. I heard Sally on the phone and said, we're locked in. But I didn't hear him just, I was outside.
Any business, any more business?
Move adjourned.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded with your all favor by I.
Aye.
Opposed, sign. Good night, you all.
Have a good evening.